Good morning. I called the Wednesday session of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting to order. Notice, please note that all, all members are now present. The motion would be in order to approve today's agenda. Gene Clifford and Melanie. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries. We are happy today. Marcy Fiorentino, is that right? Oh my goodness. Welcome. We're very interested in information concerning academic standards and programs designed to enrich students' civics understanding. Welcome to the State Board of Education.
And Board of Education members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and share with you information about the, information about the history of government standards as well. I just want to let you see it progresses from the mission statement, instructional practices, down to civic advocacy with a bridge between how history government standards connect to civics education. This is the mission statement. I think that speaks volumes. So the three focuses are to create informed, thoughtful, and engaged citizens. So one thing great about the history government standards are that there are only five of them. In a lot of content areas, you might have numerous content standards, and these five are practical, they're real world, and they certainly invite inquiry and relationship with community. So each one of the five standards can be applied in all four content areas for history. Civics and government is what we're focusing on in this particular presentation, and then it also includes geography and economics. So each one of the standards has four benchmarks that need to be focused on. So all five standards each have four benchmarks, and you just substitute the standard in there. For example, choices have consequences for the next one, you would be rights have rights, rights and responsibilities. So that as you go through each standard, you still have the same focuses. Recognizing, drawing conclusions, investigating, and especially with number four, to make a claim and use the evidence to support that. So these are the focuses that by grade level, so in each district, these are what they'll focus on based on grade. Yes.
Just came in, and this is an area, this is an area that he is very interested in. And so are you back there, Steve?
I am.
Okay, would you start over?
You don't need that for me.
No, I'm talking about Marcy. If she didn't just start over, because I would like for, to make sure that you, because we're talking about civic engagement, and I know that's, that's an area that you're very interested in, so I'm going to.
Thank you. Sorry for.
So the rest of.
To be here a few minutes earlier.
So, well, we, we started a few minutes early, so, so for the rest of you, I apologize, you get to hear it twice. In case you slept first time, you get to wake up and hear it again this time. Okay. I'm sorry, let's go ahead and start over again. Thank you.
That's okay. Again, thank you so much, and thank you for being here. So it's just an overview. We have the mission statement for KSDE for history government, and also we then tie that with how it ties in specifically with civics and then leading into civic advocacy. This one has.
We'll get you on.
You keep afterwards, you keep your notes. I'll look at it later.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll get it to you.
So this is the mission statement, and I just really think that mission statement says a lot. It's one sentence, it's clear and concise. And I really like the word themselves. Right now, when social emotional competencies are so important, especially in what we're dealing with across the country, right across the world right now, keeping themselves balanced is certainly a big part of it, too. So we want to have informed, thoughtful, and engaged citizens. So it's almost threefold citizenship. And there are only five social studies standards, and they're practical and they're real world application. So they focus in four different content areas, history, this particular content area today that we're talking about is civics and government with some focus, and then geography and economics. So each one of the standards has the four benchmarks, and not to go through them, you know, all again, but I love the analyze, recognize, analyze, draw conclusions, investigate, and then make a claim based on evidence. So these are the focus areas by grade level. And at the high school level, we have civics and government as a class. We also have at the high school level, a lot of high schools offer government that has civics included in it, but it can also be a year-long course. Okay, so in kindergarten, learners might explore playground rules and how they, how to get along with others. In high school, how government policies affect others and themselves. So this is a sample of civics at the K two level. I like the terminology classroom citizens. You're exposing students already to the word citizen. And certainly the collective decision-making for something that you'd like a kindergartner to be able to be competent at. Third to fifth grade example. And this certainly addresses the inclusion and the equity piece that are also woven throughout the standards. Again, citizenship skills showing up, and this actually even has leadership values, trustworthy, forward-thinking. Some sixth through eighth grade compelling questions that are in the standards. And again, the equity and inclusion included with that last compelling question. And let me just make note that for each area, there are many compelling questions. I've just pulled a few out that would go along and be a nice match with the civics, that there are a lot of them that are included in it. High school compelling questions. Competencies. And again, you've got the evidence and the argument included so that they actually can look at evidence and, and look into primary sources. Competencies at the high school level. I like this one, too. Communicates with policymakers. So at the high school level, there are projects where they actually want their learners to, to engage with the community and engage on policies that, that they might see, might be valuable. And again, registers to vote if applicable. So now I'd like to introduce Thomas Fulbright. He's a teacher at, here at Topeka. He's also the president of the, the president of the Kansas Council for Social Studies. And I'll turn it over to Thomas. I'm not really sure how to do that.
Good morning.
Is he going to share something?
Yeah, he's going to talk for a couple of minutes and share their, their more PowerPoint slides, so thank you, Brad.
Alrighty, so I'm looking for the stop share here.
Well, his, his slides are in.
Oh.
In the PowerPoint. I just don't know how to turn it over to him, or is he just on there? They're embedded in this one.
So Thomas, can you just unmute and talk?
I believe that I am, am unmuted.
Okay, and then you just drag.
Okay, so thank you, Thomas. I'm sorry. All I had to do was push the button, and there you are. So this is, this is the beginning of your slide. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, is my microphone on? Just double checking.
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. Good morning, everyone. I can't hear too well you all.
So there were a lot of good mornings back, and the first, are you able to see your first slide?
I am.
Okay.
So I believe I am going to be talking to you all about an example assessment that we created as part of the pilot for the new social studies assessment. Believe that, that's what my responsibility is, right, Marcy?
Well, to share your, the project that you did with your class around civic engagement.
Fantastic. Okay, so this was created in the context of, a couple of years ago, I'm sure you remember, in 2018, there was the student walkouts. Our students were really interested in this, not just because of the topic, but because it was the opportunity to walk out of school. So we, as social studies teachers, really jumped on the opportunity to teach them that this is civic engagement, that that's what they were doing. And we created an assessment based around this idea, this prompt, of is civic engagement a right students have, or do students have a responsibility to focus on their studies? The key idea was we were trying to get them to look at what they were doing and reflect on it as taking civic action, as young people. So the design of this lesson, we started with the first task of students study the timeline to look at different instances. Sorry, does someone have a question?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just heard something. I'm used to my students and sometimes hearing little things on Zoom, and that gives me a glimmer of hope that maybe someone wants to participate and ask a question.
We may have questions at the end, but we'll hold those questions, so you just do your entire presentation, and then we will pause and have opportunities for questions.
So the design of the state assessment has a number of different parts to it, and there's a number of formative tasks. So I'm going to describe those formative tasks before I talk about the summative piece. So the first summative, sorry, formative task was students study their timeline to identify issues that have caused students to become civically engaged in the past. We wanted them to see that their interest in that walkout was not a new phenomenon. We wanted to see, show them that over time, students had, in a number of instances, gotten civically engaged. So trying to give them some context to that. To help them then further understand it, the next formative task was we had them analyze primary documents from past debates over student engagement. For example, they read statements related to the civil rights children's crusade. Those were the walkouts in Birmingham. It was interesting that there was a document from the activist side. It was encouraging students to participate as a way to encourage their community to make changes. But other people said, this isn't children's role. You guys need to stay home. It's safer at home. After that formative assessment, they looked at court documents, so we looked at a bunch of primary sources, including ones from the case of Burnside versus Byers and the Blackwell County Board of Education. I thought those were really unique, not just because of the topic, but because those were examples that were really, I think, a way to illustrate to my students that this has been something that not just privileged students have been doing. Those students were children of color who were protesting civil rights in the 1960s. They wore buttons to school and got suspended for it. And that's really cool, because that set up the ideas that would later be debated in the oral arguments and briefs for the Tinker case, which we're far more familiar with. That would be the case in Iowa, the kids who wore the armbands. And lastly, students make connections between the ideas and motivations of past students for getting civically engaged and actions being taken today by their fellow students engaged in different protests. One of the most important parts of the Kansas Social Studies Standards is having students communicate the conclusions that they come to from their studies. And we thought, rather than just have them write a standard essay, we thought we would create an opportunity for them to practice again, putting action to what they learned into action. And they were going to communicate their conclusion to our principal. They wrote a letter to our principal and delivered a letter to our principal encouraging him to either support students in their right to be civically engaged, or to remind students that they have a responsibility to focus on their studies. So this was enjoyable, seeing them not just write in a way that demonstrated that they learned something, but actually use their learnings to take civic action.
So thank you so much, Thomas. So if this would be a good time for questions, because he will have another class coming in soon, and then we'll go on to the civic advocacy piece right after this. If you have questions for him.
And Board members, if you have questions, this will be the time to sign in. Thomas, what grade level do you teach?
I teach at Hope Street Academy, and just the nature of our school, because we have students who are repeating grades. I can't really say that I teach a specific grade, because there's kids from different grades there, but the class that I teach is junior year U.S. history.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Well, let's move on.
Thank you so much, Thomas.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So I want to talk about the civics advocacy network, and this is an opportunity for Kansas school districts if they are becoming civically engaged and, and really encouraging their students to become active in the community, which we know are a lot of initiatives of the state board. So we have success competencies to, to recommend to schools that they include. And again, all of these are so practical. So this is based on six strategies for effective civic engagement. And when we take a look at that, I really like the community and service learning. That's one thing about this pandemic, it has allowed students from across the state to engage with each other, whereas prior to this, they maybe didn't have a Zoom where they could all jump on and, and talk about different topics. So schools are able to apply for this award by documenting the progress that they have, the programs that they have involved. There's a team that scores those, and then schools are selected as schools of excellence. These are the 2019-20 award winners. These were announced at the July board meeting. So we do have training taking place for districts that are interested in making an application. We are hoping maybe that in the past that they had been invited to an award ceremony here, and hopefully this year that can happen. We don't know if that will happen or not, but in the past, it had also been done on Constitution Day. And as we know, right down the street is Lee Compton with the Constitution Building. So I'm, I'm eager for any questions you might have, or thoughts, or feedback, concerns. Yes.
Who is involved in the, in the, in the developing of the standards? I don't mean the names of the people, but you have, you have a committee, I'm sorry.
Sure, I understand. It was a team of teachers and social studies coordinators and, and people from across the state. It was under the leadership of Don Gifford, who was my predecessor in this position, and they were just reapproved in March of 2020.
And was there good participation in that?
There was really, really great participation in that. The committee's listed at the beginning, at the front of the standards document, several people on that that are also faculty-level social studies consultants and do some consulting for higher education.
So it's people other than just people in schools?
Well, some of those people are in schools and.
Others beyond that, beyond that, okay.
Yes.
Now, we're, is somebody, Steve, we're more informal than you are across, you are across the street. But we'll get to that later. Marcy, go ahead.
I was just curious, as far as Kansas can, I think this is something that's been in progress for a few years. When did it officially start? And then my other question is, how many schools right now are utilizing work?
Sure, so I'm not sure exactly when it started. Yes.
Well, Brad's going to come up, too.
Okay, great.
Couple of things, Representative Hubert, and for others. So the civic advocacy network was set up as, and it's part of what we call our STAR recognition system. So when we take those items that are the successful high school graduate academic cognitive and social emotional kindergarten readiness. Each of those areas, we recognize school districts that have achieved at the highest of levels to kind of like Olympic gold medals, if you would. In the civic advocacy network, so we, we started the Kansas Can Vision with a tour in Brad and I in 2015, and we'll be discussing this a little bit later. It was put into effect in 16, and the board said by the time we get to 25 and 26, we want to have all this accomplished. It, as one of the things that school districts can use to show competency mastery is the naturalization exam. That is in standard number one. It's in the document itself. So that is one of the parts of the civic advocacy network. Many of you have come, we've done this in the past, the celebration over in the auditorium at the Attorney General's Office. And school districts then have to reapply every so often, every few years, and to get to the top level, they have to mentor other school districts in getting to that level. So I don't know the exact number, since I think this is the third year of it that we've recognized that, but you can see at least those that are recognized at the highest of levels this year.
And I would say that I, I think that the, the civic engagement piece of this is so important, and we're hoping to get a lot more districts participating with some excitement and, you know, really push it forward so that we have that civic engagement that we want. I mean, community involvement is, is what we're looking for, so we're really hoping to increase that number.
I would like to help you, and I would like to talk to you more at a later date.
Very good.
Okay, we have two questions, and then to keep on schedule with the representative, we need to honor his time. I'm going to, the two people that are on the list are going to ask their questions, and then we'll see if there are other things, we'll, we'll talk about it later. Okay, Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, I would like to ask you about the assessment, because I know that, for those of you, I think most of you know this, we have assessments every year on reading and math, but every other year, we do them on history, government, and social studies, and science. So what, could you tell me something about the questions on civics? And, because I'm assuming they're included in every one, so could you just say anything about those, you know, I'm assuming they're grade level?
Yes, so the, the history government assessment is quite different than the other content areas. This year, we're doing a field test, and it's a classroom-based assessment, so that the classroom teacher, similar to what Mr. Fulbright shared, that would be an example of an HGSS assessment. So the kids pick a question or work with a teacher or guided towards a question that is, has some historic research involved or some community research involved. And as they discover that, they go through the standards, and then they draw a conclusion with, with evidence. So that would be, his example was an example of, of how the assessment works, so that in each classroom, the students can work with their teachers to discover a compelling question that that individual student might have around a topic, or a topic that might be, you know, a class-wide topic. So it is a field test this year. We do have quite a few districts, more than I thought we would, since it's optional to participate, so that's exciting, and that feedback will help us to, to mold it. And then for next year, the intent is to have fourth grade, seventh grade, and eleventh, and the fourth and seventh specifically, so that it doesn't coincide with the other assessments at fifth and eighth, to take off some of that assessment time.
Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make note that I talked to a gentleman when we were passing the social studies and history standards, they're like 225, 50 pages, and I know it's guidance. Nothing can be mandated from us. It's guidance for everyone, because every school district kind of picks and chooses what they want to do based on their own curriculum. every school district kind of picks and chooses what they want to do based on their own curriculum. I had a guy with a master's in history help me go through all that before I called Don Gifford, and Don Gifford and I had almost an hour conversation. And he said every five years, he had said that that could almost be brought down to like 13 pages, not 250 pages. He even admitted that to me, that he says it's just too much. It's just too broad. And that was my biggest concern, is it's more social studies and not history, or not the main focus. And that was my concern back then, and I did not approve those standards. I was probably the only one that didn't, I don't know what Steve Roberts did, but at that time. But I was just too concerned that there was, it was just too broad. And again, it's guidance, and I didn't know as far as it being rolled out to the school districts, how the civics part, as far as like the civics test we're talking about. I just, I had concerns about it, and I just thought it was too much, too long, too broad. And I feel like it could be reduced, condensed, and more focused if we're going to just, how do school districts pick and choose what they do? I think that that needs to be something that we're zeroed in on as far as the civics part of that and history. So, that's just my two cents. I just wanted to make that note today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne, and this will be the last question.
Thank you. And I think one of the most exciting things, besides kids coming here to get their awards, which is really exciting. They're all excited about the projects they did and how they got out in the community and all that. But it's also the Civic Engagement Annual Conference that we have, where kids come and tell all about the projects that they did and how they got out in the community. I guess, is that going to be able to happen at all this year, do we know? Because that was exciting to have the kids actually come report out.
Right. So, I know that it was canceled last year, and for this year, what we're going to do is have an HGSS showcase that we've started to invite districts to, and based, actually based around the assessment piece. We'd like to showcase student projects, student opportunities, and give some of that networking opportunity. It will be virtual, but that showcase is just now starting to be planned. It'll probably be in late April or early May. So, that's when we'll have a lot of the field test pieces back. So, they will be showcasing their work.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate this information and look forward to updates at some point.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, I want to introduce at this time, one of the most important people in the room, and that is with her camera, Deborah Brimmer. Deborah is Representative Hubert's administrative assistant, but more importantly, she was the administrative assistant for the Legislative Task Force on dyslexia. So, I got to work with her and got to know her, and I appreciate your good work, and try your best to keep Steve.
Oh, she does, and she's not my executive assistant. She's my partner, and I wouldn't be able to do the things I do without her.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Steve Hubert, who is the chair of the House Education Committee, and he wants to address us. And we want to find ways to cooperate without stepping on each other.
That is my goal too, and that is one of the purposes for me being here today. I have a, this is probably my third draft. When I first got on the calendar about three weeks ago, I had an initial draft, and here we are, even yesterday, this week, Deborah and I talking about coming over here today. I understand that the emotions are high, not just between the legislature and the State Board, but parents and school boards. There's, you know, there's just high emotions right now. I believe it's my goal, it's your goal, to help deal with that in a professional way, a respectful way. I understand sometimes that that doesn't always happen. I know, Jim, the email you sent me was from your heart, and we have a relationship where you could share your heart with me, and I appreciated that. I understand your discouragements, your disappointments, your frustrations, and in my own way, I have some of my own. And, you know, as a parent and a grandparent, I've been dealing with all of the turmoil of the COVID, you know, situation that we're dealing with. Last year in the legislature, we tried to work with you and the State Board to help accommodate the fact that things were very fluid. And even as we did that, it was disappointing to me to see the governor come in and shut schools down like she did without even communicating with you guys. But that's what happened. That was almost 11 months ago. I know that the 10 of you, well, the 11 of you are working very hard to do the best you can to deal with a very fluid situation. It's changing. It's challenging. It's hard. And you have people you hear from. In the legislature, we, even through a campaign season, as we hear from parents, we're hearing from some of the same people, but from some other different ones who are expressing their frustrations. Over in Gardner School District, you know, it was, it's been one of the few that, you know, just even this week is finally starting some in-person instruction. I have a picture on my phone. My granddaughter, she's a ninth grader, and she had her first day of high school in person yesterday. It was Gardner. And she was so excited. You should see her face. She's going back to school. My grandson is a sophomore. He went over and spoke at the school board. He shared his heart about why he felt like the remote and the hybrid plans that were being used just weren't working real well. He's a very motivated young man. He has parents that are keeping on top of him. He's already, as an athlete, as a high school pitcher, he's got plans to go to a school, get an academic and athletic scholarship. And he, as he's worked with these teachers, he said, I'm basically about half-time with what I'm doing online with the remote and the hybrid plans. So, his parents are challenging him to not just take the other half-time and waste it. And again, he's motivated, and I appreciate it, and I love my grandson. Enough said there. So, I watched the school board meeting back in November over in Gardner. Lot of emotion. And at that point in time, there was a vote. The decision was made to wait till January. At January, the decision was still postponed, and even up until last week, no decision had been made. I know over...
What decision are you talking about, Steve?
On when and how it would move to more of an in-person instruction, because Gardner has been pretty much completely remote since day one.
Are you aware of the fact that yesterday we voted to approve the...
Yes, yes. And again, part of me recognizing your hard work. Deborah sent it to me last night at about eight o'clock. That's the kind of partner I have. And again, thank you for your efforts. In the legislature, there's efforts to do that also, and, you know, and I understand that sometimes it can appear confrontational. I get that. My personal style right now, after 30-plus years in doing this, is less confrontational than Chairman Williams and even Chairman Baumgartner. Maybe in my younger day, I was there. I've mellowed out a little bit, but I'm still just as passionate in wanting to accomplish that. And I believe if you listen to my committee meetings, you know, you will recognize the difference. That being said, Christie is a friend who is just as passionate, and so is Molly, and I understand your frustration with all that's going on right now. I'm trying to do what I can in the legislature to be a peacemaker, to, even coming over to you last year, it was an attempt to say, let's work together. Let's communicate. Hasn't always been the case in my 30 years of the State Board and the legislature working together. I was joking yesterday with Blaine Finch, the Speaker Pro Tem, and I can guarantee you, I fully recognize I am no Ronald Reagan. I respect how he did things. And one of the things he did was make a statement years ago during the Cold War. He said, Mr. Gorbachev, tear down these walls. This wall, the one in Berlin. I know, I'm not going to make that kind of statement. I am going to say, we have a window of opportunity. Last year, I saw that window of opportunity, and I went through it. I'm back again today, even in the emotions we're dealing with, saying, we need to communicate. We need to all work to tamp down when emotions get too high and the temperature rises to the point where we can't communicate. Again, we all have points, different points, and we all have different backgrounds. But I fully respect that each one of you, in your own way, is trying to do what I'm trying to do, which is what's best for our kids. That's what our focus is, and I want to work with you to do that. You know, I've been on education or education budget committees for the last 21 years. Clay Arnt, many of you might remember Clay Arnt. He was a great friend of mine. I was his vice chair. I learned a lot from him on how to do what I'm doing right now and what you're trying to do, which is to work together, to keep emotions under control. One of the first things even that I tackled, that's something that I'd seen in presentations for several years, was computing science. Had a bill. I was excited. Going to look at how we could, in a small step, look at getting a computing science class to count as a science credit. We had a hearing yesterday over in my committee. Stephen King, Brad, they participated. It was a very good hearing. I know when I first did my bill, you know, it died. That happens in the legislature. Bills die. But what doesn't happen is, from my perspective, is what I call back in my days of working at Boeing, plan, do, check, act. How do you move the ball forward? That was a philosophy of continuous quality improvement. And it's something that I didn't just get vaccinated on. I've got the full barrel. I was a facilitator. And so, it's something I live my life by now. And with that bill, you guys presented me, Randy presented me an opportunity to participate with you on saying, we are not where we want to be with our computing science standards, with our efforts in teaching that in the schools, but let's do better. Thank you, Randy. You invited me to appoint two people to be on that task force. You invited me to work with some people that I had made relationships with, including Katie Hendrickson, who I believe is listening today. She was involved in my hearing yesterday. She is an excellent asset for me, for my committee, for you. I know she's talked to you recently, and I would encourage you, whenever it's possible, next month, or whenever you can get her on the calendar, she can do what she did for my committee. I know she's working with Stephen King. There is so much we can do working together, partnering. That was a...
And she, yeah, we have been in contact, and that is going to be on our agenda in March.
I know she's ready. Whenever you can do it, and I know Stephen King is ready to work with her and you to move the ball forward. From last year when I came over and you were making your recommendations on computing science to today, I know COVID has impacted even our efforts in all areas, including that area. Are we, where we are wanting to be now, based on what we presented last year? No. But plan, do, check, act means we don't worry about the past. We assess where we're at, and we move forward. And again, it has been a privilege, taking a passion of mine, recognizing for me, it was a weakness I had in high school, in college, and then even my 26-years-career point of computing skills. It was just a weakness for me. So, that's why I push it now, and that's why Andy Slapp from Wichita State had a good follow-on. About 70% of all new jobs are going to require computing science skills. It's the future, and it's something we have to tackle and do better with, or we're not going to grow the Kansas economy. We're not going to keep kids who get a good education in Kansas, in Kansas, because they're going to have to go somewhere else to find a job. And the trends are not looking good for Kansas right now. I believe we could lose a congressional seat, and I'm getting off track here, and I'm going to stop for questions. One of the reasons I wanted to come over is, no, is to let you ask questions of me. I guarantee you, I could speak for 15 minutes. I could speak for 30 minutes. I could speak for an hour.
I'm not going to cut you off.
Yeah. But what I will do is stop and allow you to share your frustrations with me. I want you to, you know, if you want to slap me around a little bit, I'm here to respect that there might be a need for that. And then my goal is to say, okay, let's forgive one another and work together. Dina, I know last year I got a little upset with you one time. I believe I apologized. If I didn't, please accept my apology again when I got upset. And so, let me answer some questions, and then I'll just close real quickly before I, my 15 minutes are up.
Well, we're going to, we're going to take the time we need.
I appreciate being here. I really do. I'm kind of applying for the position of legislative liaison with, you have liaisons. I know Dina, I know Ben. We really don't have one, and so I'm applying for the job. I don't know if anybody else is applying. If they are, and you got a better candidate, you take them up on it. But right now, I think I'm looking around. I'm probably the only one applying for the job. And in applying for that job, I hope I can show a commitment to do better. As far as my role in the legislature and your role in helping us to work together. I love politics. I'm a junkie, and I've been doing this for a long time. I had a great civics teacher who got me hooked up with Bowie State, and I got elected to be a state legislator in 1976. And my goal even from then was, I'm going to do that for real someday, because it lit a fire in me. And that came from a great civics teacher who had a task before me. He said, Steve, I can see in you something that I want to cultivate. And he did. And here I am today, 45 years later. Hit me with your best shots. How can I...
Well, we're not going to hit shots. We're going to solve problems.
Well, and that's my goal, and that's why I'm here.
But let me tell you, in my experience with my ninth-grade civics class, it was the only time in my high school career that I got sent to the office for discipline. And I deserved it.
Been there, done that.
Let's talk about the elephant in the room.
About what?
The elephant in the room. Let's talk about the elephant in the room. We believe that it is our sole responsibility for graduation requirements. Now, by the way, board, this is not a surprise to Steve. We've had this conversation before.
I respect that.
So, we also believe that we need to significantly improve civics understanding and knowledge. We also, I understand there's another financial literacy bill.
That's my co-chair's passion.
I also believe that we both want to make sure that kids have the financial literacy necessary. So, the question that I would have, and we have been successful when we cooperated. If you'll recall, five or six years ago, we had emergency safety intervention. We worked together. We had a task force made up of legislators and us and a bunch of other people. And we still have remnants of that group together, because we put, we built some relationships so that if there are problems in school districts, now we deal with them and have a mechanism to deal with them. That was a very successful approach. It wasn't, it started out going to be legislative. It ended up being a cooperative effort that solved problems. The dyslexia task force is the same thing. We have moved forward with that.
I worked on that, and I appreciate your efforts.
We, there were, there have been times in the legislature where, you know, bills came up to deal with particular difficult issues like abuse, physical, sexual abuse.
Bullying.
And we have been able to put together our mental health advisory council that's made up of legislators and professionals, and deal with some of those issues, you know, in lieu of legislation, but we solved the problem. And by the way, whenever we were able to deal with that one time, and, say for instance, get to the point where we actually were successfully stopping that legislation, Russ Jennings was madder at me than I believe I've ever seen anything else. But I can assure you, but I can assure you now, he's a member of that task force and has bought into it, and we're making progress. And we both got over that and moved forward. So, my question is, how can we cooperatively solve the goals that you want to solve and your vice chair wants to solve without what we consider to be violating, and that's the big issue? big issue-
I got you.
-violating our, what we believe is our constitutional sole responsibility-
Okay.
-for graduation requirements.
Let me address that. First of all, I feel your pain. In the legislature, we feel like our constitutional duty is to appropriate, and the courts have decided otherwise. And so, even now, there's that underlying dynamic where, I can feel your pain, I know the legislature feels it in the, the exact opposite way. But, it comes down to, how do we do these things? We work together. In computing science, we've been doing that. On, on the civics, I didn't really see from last year to this year that happening in a way that, you know, even, I asked for information from my hearing, and one of the things I asked for, I found out that the, the state assessment, the biennial on, on civics and history had been canceled. And I asked for, well, when did that happen? How did it happen? Why did that happen? And, you know, here I am, not in the loop, not hearing about it. And so, even for me, with, with my bill, I, I believe we can work together in a way that we can assess. My citizenship test is a part of trying to fold it into a statute that's already in place. And it's probably the only area, maybe, where that happens, which is the civics requirement. I would like not only to fold that in, but also what you're doing with, with Kansas Can. I believe that that started around the time when Attorney General Schmidt came over here and made the same request that I made. And it was a part of the outflow of that process. So for me, after this meeting, last week I mentioned to Brad, Randy, you and I, we can sit down and talk, because I have a bill and I'm going to try to move forward. But I've already talked to my reviser about how to do it with balloon language in a way that I think we can all agree to. Take away a little bit of the high stakes assessment of what I'm dealing with. I had Matt, my, just went blank, my children's government teacher, could speak and was a part of my hearing. And he was talking about how he's already doing that. And I believe we can build that into the classroom and not have it be standalone. So I would, I would love to follow up with you next week, and if I kick something out, we have three weeks before turnaround where we can try to find common ground.
Well, we're not, we're not opposed to anything. We're not opposed to civics, we're not opposed to rigorous civics, and we're not opposed, you know, we, we support.
I agree, we have the same goal. We have the same goal.
The goals that we have are the same, the, the issue for us, and, and whenever this is over, if I'm just, if I'm in any way misrepresenting the position of the board, they probably won't do it in front of you, but they'll take care of it, you know?
I believe you're accurately representing a position that I fully understand.
Is that we believe that, that when it comes to graduation requirements, that it's like sacred.
I get that.
Now, can we get to where you want to be? Yes.
I think so. And that's why I'm here.
But if we do it through, there is always going to be a conflict. Whenever it becomes a graduation requirement imposed by somebody besides us-
I fully understand.
I think that's the bottom line, and I think that's, that's, that's a non-negotiable for us.
Well, even, even looking that it's in the requirements right now, let's tweak those requirements in a way that works for you and works for-
Okay, and, and what I'm saying is that we are willing to do whatever is necessary to get to that point cooperatively, to get to the goal, not to the, not to the requirement.
I understand your work, I fully understand where you're at.
Even though, at some point, it may become a requirement, but it will be us that do it, with your support and help.
Well-
So that's where we are.
I appreciate the goal, and I know in the legislature, after 21 years, there's a preferred way of doing things, and in the legislature, we call, we call the messiness that is what happens over there sausage making.
Yeah.
And I've participated in that also. And I know sometimes, when policy decisions get dealt with, they get tied to money.
Yeah.
And that's the only way it's ever happened. So here I am trying to do a different way, and I know-
Well, and, and we, we appreciate that, and, and I'm loving this.
I am too. And again, I hope you'll accept my application. I'm willing to come back anytime.
Well, and, and, well, your, your application just got approved, by the way.
All right. I look forward to working with you, I know I've already used more than my time.
But the bottom line is, how do we get there now? What, what's the next?
Yeah, I, I think the next step is for Randy and I to meet and talk and look at, you know-
Are you open to getting there without, without requirements?
I'm not going to make any promises right now, because-
I didn't say to make promises, I said, are you open?
I'm, I'm willing to try to get there.
Okay.
And if I kick out a bill, my, a bill as is, it's not disrespectful, it's me having to, you know, last year, my bill basically, I, I was not in a position of doing a whole lot, because I couldn't even get it out of my committee. And the reality was, as I worked with Randy, you know, the only compromise we could come up with was change chal de mai. I didn't like that, but I agreed to it because I was trying to move the ball forward. Plan, do, check, act, move the ball forward. So here I am again, and I'm pashed up moving forward, I'm, I'm going to kick it out, and then I've told my reviser, be prepared to work on balloon language, and that's where I'm at, and I believe we can get there. And I believe we can do it so that both sides are happy.
So, so the next step is for you and Randy to get together to see if we can get to-
I think that's a good next step. And besides just this one little piece, there's many other things we can talk about. Here we are in week five in the past, Randy and I would have a lot more interaction, but COVID is causing that to be challenging, and I know in the legislature, we're-
Well, you're the first outside person that's ever met with us for, for months, so.
Well, and I, it was, it was important for me to do whatever it took to be here in person, because I talk with my hands, like, right now, you're, you're missing some of my, my best communication, because I talk with my facial features, and you're, you know, and even, you know, it's just so much with communication.
Well, you're lucky the mind's covered, so you're-
And, and so, but I understood the rules, even my partner, she's, she's staying on top of me.
Well, you can be the liaison, but you always have to bring Deborah with you.
Well, she's probably the real liaison, because she's good, and she helps me-
We want to get where you want to get.
I think so.
But we want to do it in a way that we don't believe is violating our-
I, I agree.
-constitutional responsibility, so let's do that.
In the podcast that I sent you, I signaled that, and then in my, my hearing last week, I signaled too, even with Matt Klusner, who, who again, 26-year teacher, who's, who's already doing it in some ways.
And others are too.
Yeah, I get that, but some aren't. And the point I'll close on-
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Steve, I mean, we're having, just like you're, like, like we're sitting at the bar.
Yeah, well, we did this in San Diego.
Yeah.
And we bonded, we got to know each other so we can do this give and take. But the point I'm going to make in closing, in plan, do, check, act, we can do better, because, you know, I look at, you know, going back with Kansas Can, and not just the civics advocacy, but the efforts you have put in on the big Kansas Can, the moonshot, and from Gemini 1 to Apollo 2. And I'm looking at the chart, and I'm seeing all the effort you've put into it. And bottom line, school districts with local control as the basis, they're not utilizing it in a way that they should be, because I'm looking at maybe 25% plus that have actually done something with it, probably 10% as far as number of schools. I have one elementary in my district. And so it's not, it's not reaching its potential of impacting the state like you want it to. I would love to have some way to work with you in a way where the legislature can be the bad cop in the, working with you as the good cop to motivate you fully getting that embraced, because it's just not happening right now. And I know, even with your efforts on the civics piece, you know, that, like I said, it's a good start. I, I would like to be more involved, I gave her an award card, and I, I can help promote it and get people to, Mays, Mays High School, one of my, was one of your award winners. So, to help overcome the, the lack of traction sometimes on, on your hard work with getting to a moonshot, actually landing someone on the moon, and saying, boy, what you, your vision for improving and reforming education in the state reaches its potential, and it gets us to where we want to be. And if that takes us tweaking some statutes in order to help make that happen, I'm glad, I'm glad to let you help me do that in a way that gets to your end game, and I'll help facilitate it, because I like what you're doing, and I want to facilitate it.
Yeah. And we're not opposed to legislation, we're not opposed to legislation, as a matter of fact-
Sometimes it's necessary.
Legislation many times helps us while we're opposed to graduation requirements.
I get that. I, I get that. And, you know-
And by the way, Peggy, would you make sure that every time we have a meeting, that Representative Huber gets, gets the, the agenda, and, and you know that you're always welcome?
I appreciate that, and again-
Now that you are our liaison.
And, and then, you know, I, I am sure that in the next week, the next month, the next three months, things are going to happen that are going to cause temperatures to rise again. I can't stop that. I can do what I can to help tamp it down a little bit. And that's what I'm doing here today. Deborah was a little bit worried that maybe it wasn't the right time for me to come over right now, even with, you know, some things that have happened recently in the legislature. And I told Deborah, I'm a big boy, I appreciate that I can go over and we can have this kind of conversation, and it'll be productive.
I told you that you would be respected.
I know, and I, I had no concern about that, and Deborah, Deborah didn't either, she was-
And I hope that you believe you have been.
She, she and I, we joke around about, she, I brainstorm with her, as I'm working on things, I, you know, and, you know, that's what I'm doing even now, even, you know, she helped me try to stay on track.
Yeah.
I've deviated from that a little bit.
Didn't work very well, Deborah.
But, I couldn't do what I'm doing without her, and I know a lot of people over in the legislature don't have someone like Deborah right now because of COVID. I begged her, I said, what do I have to do, you know, to get you back, to make you safe and fill? She, she's had a transplant, and I guarantee you that not only for me, Kristy Williams is in my office, we do everything we can so she knows. There was one time I, I kind of forgot, and I could tell she was uncomfortable, and I finally realized that the problem was, I said, in the future, just point, just point, and I'll-
Well, the bottom line is, let's, let's, let's not leave here today without, without a plan. And the plan now is for you and Randy to get together as soon as possible, to find ways-
Yeah, and I'll just mention one other thing.
To solve our problems.
Even, even between last year and this year, Randy and I have had some communications on a couple issues that, you know, Martin Luther King curriculum is something that I heard about. I, I got to participate in a Valley Center High School Black Lives Matter protest slash rally. I went and spoke to them, and it was a little bit rowdy, and, and I brought up to them, Martin Luther King preached, we can get where we want to be without violence. Nonviolent protest is what he was about, it's what that curriculum's about. I'm putting a plug in to promote it even now, because it's curriculum that you have guys have reviewed. I had a hearing on it at the beginning of the session, you were involved in that, and I want to get that out to schools as a resource, because I guarantee you, just like the legislature and the state board are having their challenges, guess what, in the world we live in, in the United States, we're in the middle of a civil war. And the protests aren't going to tamp down anytime soon. So we in Kansas, we got to do our part to make sure that we stay on top of it. And again, I'm getting sidetracked a little bit, but I look forward, I know staying tomorrow are going to be busy, beginning of next week, maybe, maybe Tuesday, let's shoot for Tuesday, and if that doesn't work, you tell me. And the other issue that I've been trying to, I have 12 new members on my committee. There's a lot of change in the legislature. 10 of them are freshmen. I'm trying to do educational things for them. There's some new members on this board, and I know there's a little bit of coming up to speed when you take on a role like this.
They're, they're fully there.
Yeah. And so, one of the things that I talked to you about, Randy, was I've had some communications with ACT about how we can better utilize the data that we get from them, work with the Board of Regents to help us to do better, to plan, do, check, act. And you, you said that, that sounded great. I talked to the board, it sounded great. The reality is, even for me, I believe that's something I can prime the pump on, but the reality is, I believe that's more your guys' role to do. I want to be a part of it, because I want data that we're using to get to where we want to be, and then with the Board of Regents, as they're dealing with the students that are coming and having to take remedial, there's just so much we can do to, to do better on. And that's a topic that I plan on after turnaround tackling, getting the ACT people, Board of Regents, you, let's have a discussion on that.
We welcome that, because, because, as you know, you were very supportive in ensuring that every student in Kansas have access to free ACT.
Yeah.
We went from 72% to 82% last year, we think we'll be at about 90%. The pandemic may have affected that. And we talked about this, scores will come down, and we'll be setting a new baseline. So it doesn't help the narrative when people say, why did scores go down? And there's no background to that, because-
I know. I'm not saying that.
You were instrumental, as, as others-
Yeah.
-in getting that done, and, and so, we certainly want to work at that, because, because this board knows that while dual credit enrollment and passing dual credit and AP exams being passed are up.
Mm-hmm.
So, but, let's have that discussion, you know, in your committee, so that everyone understands it.
Yeah, yeah. And I keep thinking of one thing, more thing I want to say.
You're about to run out of time, Steve.
I know. You know, my, even with the civics piece, you know, the basics, and it's, it's, you know, baby steps with some of the things that are in the citizenship test, I liken that to multiplication tables. You got to know some multiplication tables in order to get to algebra II and trigonometry and, you know, and so even with the engagement pieces that you're talking about, good stuff, in order for, for our students to, to be able to do all those things, they need to know the basics. And I can guarantee you with the NAEP scores, and even the, the information, the testing that took place in 16 and 18, we're not where we want to be with those types of written assessments on where our students at right now. I guarantee you, in 30 years of asking these types of questions, Matt Klusner's brought students to, to me, and I've went to this, his school, my schools for years, there's just, he even said that he's been doing that test in his classroom. At first, he said I was a little disappointed, but I'm using that as a learning opportunity so that if there ever became a point where they needed to do it, I'll have them ready, and they'll pass that test. And again, it's 60%. So-
Well, we thank you, and-
Yeah. I better stop now, you got to, I got to get ready for my job.
We thank you, we hope that, but, but what, you know, this is, this is, this is step one.
No, trust, baby steps.
And we will, let's, let's, let's maybe go a little more than just baby steps.
Well-
So we will-
Last year was baby steps.
We'll be meeting with this, Deborah, by the way, has my number, if, if you need me.
You know-
And, and we will have a report from the commissioner next month about the progress, and about how we can, it's, it's not just, in our case, stop legislation, stop requirements, it's how we can achieve common goals.
Yeah.
That's the issue.
I agree.
How do we achieve common goals in such a way that we don't step on you, and you don't step on us? And that, by the way, can be done, but if it was easy, anybody could do it.
And, and I guarantee, I, I probably, if I step on your toes in the future, forgive me in advance, because sometimes I, I believe, sometimes you got to do and ask for forgiveness later, because my frustration in 30 years is so much of, you know, I was telling Deborah, why do you, you know, why do you have the passion, you know, why are you doing this? And you said, well, sometimes I feel like I'm beating my head against the wall, why do you do that? Well, it feels so good when I stop.
Yeah.
But then I stop, and I say, okay, go do it again.
Well, you're aware of the fact that if, that if I'm concerned, you will hear.
Well, and, and again, I appreciated your email, I didn't have time to fully respond to it.
You responded appropriately, so.
Uh, but, because I was getting ready for my civics hearing, and that was the best hearing I have ever had.
Okay.
And I'm excited, and I'm getting so much positive feedback from people who recognize the common goal that we have in this area, and who say, Steve, go get it done. I want to get it done in a way that you guys say, Steve, good job, thank you for partnering with us. With that, thank you.
And I want to get there too.
Yeah, I know you do.
Thank you very much. Deborah, take care of him, make sure that he stays in line, and, and ladies and gentlemen, we will take a 10-minute break.
Thank you very much. And I, I'm going to give a shout out to Ben, he's my guy, he is very responsive.
Okay, we're back in order. I apologize for that taking a while. It appeared to me that we were making some progress. So I'm solely responsible for pushing it forward like that and take that responsibility. We may have to adjust. We probably won't get everything done today that we intended to. So we'll need about 12:00, 12:30 decide what we want to do about either continuing or scheduling work sessions at some future meeting. But we'll start with a review of Kansas-Kan. We really need to make sure that we have time for the navigating next at some point this morning, even if we have to do some other adjusting. So you have the rest of the day, Commissioner, and just arrange it to where whatever.
So we were going to spend a full retreat on how we got to where we are and kind of what we're planning to do when we come out of COVID. And I'll talk a little bit about that. So we're just going to give a high level, not very much in detail, but we are coming back to this topic fully. So please know that what we're going to do after about 20 minutes or so is go to navigating next and the funding streams because that, well, this is really important. That's urgent because we've got to get that out to school. So thank you. So Jim and I were, you know, we can, Jim McNeese and I, we can get lost on computer science when X is a derivative of Y and we're, and we've got to have a, but history, we get it sad on the civics side of it. So where have we come? You're going to know some different formats because I pulled what we call, Brad and I call the oldies but goodies. 2015, state board charged and said, let's go in a bold, different direction. We want to be really seen as different. Brad and I went to 20 different locations in Kansas and conducted what we called a listening tour. Anyone could come. It was wide open. We did them in the morning. We did them in the afternoon. We did them in the evening. We even had an online version, but we really wanted people to come. And these are the 20 locations that we went to originally. And we asked three simple questions that had lots of complex answers, but they were three simple questions that I'll get to. When we came back from the 20, we had asked people when they came in, Dana, sign in and tell us who you represent. She could put parent, she could put business owner, she could put educator. We noticed that most people did not say, I'm a business. I work for Walgreens or whatever. So I went to the Kansas Chamber of Commerce and Mike O'Neill was the executive director at that time and said, can you help me just engage the business community in the chambers? And he said, yes, glad to. And so we went then back out to seven different locations, just with the chambers of commerce and business leaders in those communities and asked the same three questions. When we got all of that together, we then brought it to Kansas State. Brad and I were reminiscing and it was open-ended, it was open-ended questions, and it crashed their computer. It's too large. Largest qualitative study ever done on education according to Kansas State in the history. We actually had to buy additional software, right, to actually run the data results. And then the state board spent four months in a process that I'll somewhat describe. Again, we're going to have a full retreat on this later. I just want to give you the backdrop. So we went to those 27. We got the data, K-State, and then you know what we did? We went back out. We called it the reunion tour. You can see, did we hear? And we went back out to 10 different locations to basically say, did we get this right? This is, is this what you think you told us? And give us feedback before we go to the state board. So 20 community meetings, seven business meetings, online version, then back out to 10 locations, did we get it right? Then it came to the board. And here was question number one. Very simple. We might alter it today. This is the way I said it at that time. Gene, think of a successful young 24-year-old living in our state. And we picked, Brad and I picked 24 at the time, and there was nothing magical, nothing scientific about that because we were thinking about the age of a young person when they might finish their formal education. That was it. So Gene, think of a successful young person. Get that vividly in your mind, Melanie. And now write down all the skills, the attributes, and the characteristics that you feel a successful 24-year-old living in our state will have, if they're successful. Write down everything that you believe makes up that success. That's question number one. That formulates the vision, the goals, and the direction. Question number two was, what should K-12 do to develop that person you just described? And the third question is, what should higher ed do to develop that person? And that's for another discussion. That's for the retreat when we talk about redesign. We got the results back from that first question, and 70% of the responses were things that were non-academic that made up success. 3% were, so I want to break that up for you just a little bit. This is the general population. And what we learned, again, this is the exact slide from that time, that when you look at the academic skills, this is so interesting, the general community broke that up, we broke that up in three areas. What's instrumental skills? It's what you heard yesterday about work-based learning. It's applying that to real-world applications. Then critical thinking, and then 5% of that 23% was traditional academics, multiplication tables. And in the non-academic skills, you can see that the general community valued intrapersonal at twice the rate almost of the interpersonal. I'll get to that as how they described it. Here's the business community, same question. I really thought, I've said this many times, I would hear, can you just teach them to count back change? Because I, you know, that's kind of the myth, right? By the way, always joked then, it's still true. The only place I know consistently that counts back change, you guys might want to chime in, in Sonic, right? Sonic Drive-In. Go to Sonic Drive-In, happy hour, you know, two to four, get your favorite drink, right? Get your favorite drink, Janet. And it's, and it comes to $2.86. Give them $7.87 and watch the fun begin because they have to do that on the fly. Everyone else is reading a cash register, right? But I didn't hear that. Even more so than the general population, they said to us, we have kids that cannot show up, they don't know how to communicate well, they, they, they don't know how to work with people. We are this over and over, still here, right? So what did they say? Well, what we learned from those business leaders is, they said, 2% of the academic, 7% of the academic skills are critical thinking, 5% is applied, 2% are traditional. But again, double on the non-academic or intrapersonal skills versus interpersonal. This is the chart of the things that came out of that. Okay, you put it together in a nice, nice chart for us later on. There you see intrapersonal, interpersonal, and cognitive. That's what they were saying. They were saying all of these things, right? And guess what we've been doing since 2016? Every time Brad and I are out, we ask people now, Anne? No, ask Ben. Ben, think of your own child or a grandchild, or if you don't have one, a kid that's really important to you. And all of these skills are important. Kenzen said, in combination, they're really important, Dana, with your grandkids, but you only get to pick one. If you only had to pick one that you want to make sure your own child, Melanie, had as an adult, which one would you pick? Does that make sense? Because Kenzen said, all of these in combination are important. We now have 10,000 responses to that question. 10,000 responses to that question since 2016. This is a word wall. Perseverance, the most commonly, the answer. Integrity, initiative, self-regulation, problem-solving, adaptability, empathy. I'll come back. Where do most of those fall? On the intrapersonal skill side. Does that make sense? 10,000 responses. I'm going to keep this up here. You know how many people responded that the number one skill, because they're all important, is content knowledge? Five. Now, it doesn't mean content knowledge isn't important. It's, they said, but these may be as important. You could argue whether it's more. I think they're equally important. So we brought all this back, and this is in general what Kenzen said. This is the big overview of what Kenzen said. We need to go in detail. Kansas children need quality preschool, including all-day kindergarten. Janet will remember, we didn't have all-day kindergarten at that time. And they said, Michelle, well, no, they said, we don't, we want parents to do preschool. We want churches to do preschool. We want schools to do preschool. We don't care. Too many kids are coming unprepared to kindergarten. And so the community has to take responsibility, parents have to take responsibility for doing that. It was, it was not schools go run pre-k. It was communities need to see how to do that. Coffeyville has a much different response to that than does St. Paul. You know why? The difference between St. Paul and St. Paul Church? Is that far? So the church runs all the preschool. In Coffeyville, the community runs the preschool. That's their choice. Changes need to be made to school culture. Let me just give you an example. Kenzans were clear that a kid that wanted to be a welder and go Tulsa Welding School deserved the same intensity and focus on them as a kid that wanted to be a doctor. And Kenzen said, and you currently don't treat them the same. You treat one as a second-class citizen and you treat one as an honor kid. And they all need to be treated the same. They said, we want more dynamic roles for counselors and social workers. We ought to hire some more, and we want them working with kids instead of doing master schedules. We want a deeper collaboration with schools and businesses. You heard all about that yesterday. I'm going to come back to the purple one. And community service and civic engagement need to be a bigger role in what we do. Kenzen said, a successful kid is in the service of others and gives back to their community. And you know, Betty, I wondered at that time, is that uniquely a Kenzen thing or a Midwestern thing or not? I don't know, but it was part of what we learned. And finally, the biggest challenge, go reorganize schools around kids and families, not around the structure of school. How many conversations have we had about that, right? Just with your own, how to do that well? And that's what we've been trying to do ever since. That was been brought. We spent four months developing three documents. This document where we argued between every and each, remember that, Janet? We argued between success and achievement was leading the world to high level. Talk about that. And then the definition that we've been talking a lot about, and that all four of these, going back to what Kenzen said, had to be equally balanced, and they never are. You know, we were celebrating Black History Month, and we talked a lot about Martin Luther King. How young he was when he accomplished, and what a great orator, what a great motivator as speaker. Other people are much more analytic and can draw, and they have a different talent. We all do. And so it's this combination of trying to figure out your strengths and what you're good at and how to combine those. And then establishing some of the outcomes. But please understand, the vision, the definition, and the goals have to be seen as one. Think sometimes people say, well, it's just about individual planning. No, it's all combined, trying to lead to this successful kid. And again, we can go over how we want to do this. So I want to show you something that is an outcome of that, and I'm going to get so excited before we go to navigating next. I'm going to share this with superintendents later on today at Council Supes. You know, this is, we have a long way to go. Representative Hubert was right. We're, you know, when you set this, you said, it's going to take us a decade to get there. And Kennedy said, we're going to go to the moon. He said, by the end of the decade. And we talked about that. And what was so interesting about a politician president saying that, had he not been assassinated, he would have still not been in office when we landed on the moon. It's rarely done because we're in a quick cycle, and it's even worse today, right? Quick cycle, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. Graduation rates. One of the things that you set as an outcome is 95% of kids should graduate from high school. Why? Economically, they really struggle if they don't. They're a burden on society, they're a burden on the family sometimes. They really struggle. There's lots of reasons that they don't. What's happened since '15? It's gone up 2.6%. All-time high, 2020, 88.3. It's gone up. All right, but Ben gets skeptical. Says, yeah, well, white kids, privileged kids got there. Let's look. We're proud of that. Are we at 95%? No. So it's how you look at it, Melanie, right? Your goal's 95. You're at 88.3. You guys must not be doing your job. Well, we were at 85.7. We're slowly getting there. What happened to kids that don't speak English as their first language? Would we like for them to graduate high school? They've gone up 6.5%. What happened with kids that are in poverty? They've gone up 3.7%. What happened with kids that have a disability? They've gone up 3.1%. I want you to look at this. The general population went up 2.6, but the subgroups grew faster than the general population. We're narrowing the gap. Now, Michelle ought to say, but Randy, but actually Jim McNeese is going to say this, Michelle, because he's an old high school principal. Randy, I can cook the books on high school graduation. I can just graduate with more kids. Don't know about the skill level. Again, you can't look at things in isolation. You have to look at the total picture. It's how we look at our own kids, I think, or our own grandkids. I know how special that one granddaughter is for you and others. We look at them as a whole. So this is great, but what do you have to look at? Can they go on to post-secondary? Because if they graduate high school and they can't get into Cali County or Washburn Tech or the military, it's a false narrative, right? So this is what's gone up in that period of time. This is what's happened in post-secondary. Started at 44% in 2015. These are five-year averages. It then went to 46 in 2016, 12 to 16. It then went to 48, 2013 to 17, and 2018, which is our last year. It ticked up about 2%, 0.2%, still at 48. What's happened over those four years? It's increased by 4%. Maybe we don't market as well as we should. Graduation grew by 2.7. The number of kids going on to their chosen post-secondary grew by four, more than the graduation rate. If it was less, we would be concerned. It's more. We want to be at 70 to 75%. We're at 48. Dana, some people would say, you're not at your goal. It's the highest in the country. You saw yesterday that 36% nationwide are going to post-secondary. We're at 48. But it's far from the goal because in order for our kids to have access to all the jobs, this is what they are going to have to have. Now, that is the high-level overview. Some of you have been on the board. Mr. Porter will know this, this slide. Brad's already laughing because he's, I've shown this, I don't know how many times. An old mentor of mine said, Randy, everyone works hard. I mean, all successful people work hard. This is the forest. He used to say, but are you in the right forest? Are you cutting the right trees? Or are you in the wrong forest? We like to argue no child left behind when we were just looking at an academic score, just looking at an academic. That was the wrong forest. We had to look at all factors of the child. I think you're in the right forest. You try to get, you always are trying to get drug into another area, and now we got to go execute over and over and over. That's a accreditation. Mr. Chairman, that was the three-hour retreat condensed into 15 minutes. We're still going to have the retreat because you know what we have to do as, as the pandemic comes out? We need to go back out. We need to go back out, and we need to do it again and say, what's changed? What have we learned? Well, you know what we've learned? A lot of kids don't like remote, and some do better. And some like hybrid, and most don't. And we need more work-based learning. And how do we accelerate all of these things into a new model, right, called redesign? But we need to listen to Kenzans and parents and business leaders again as we go out. So, Mr. Chairman, before we turn it over to Brad and Craig, kind of bring us back into navigating next, that was what was going to be a much longer discussion around the vision of the board.
And we will schedule that very soon to continue that process.
Maybe next month.
Yeah, probably so, yeah.
So, thank you.
We're just going to quickly walk you through, just kind of a reminder of what we shared yesterday. So this is the same PowerPoint. We just want to really kind of refresh in your mind. I will say, following up on Randy, where we're headed with navigating next, while a year ago, we didn't even have the term continuous learning. We did not have navigating change, and we don't now have navigating next. It was all about this board's vision that Randy just kind of over highlighted. But we do believe that navigating change and navigating next align perfectly with where we want to go as a state because our purpose has not changed. We still want to lead the world in the success of each student. This board's Kenzen-Kan vision is our purpose in order to get there. Our path has changed, but we've still kept our eye on the board's vision. Everything that we have are resources and tools that we want, we were using in redesign. We had built into KISA. So we really see these next 12 to 18 to 24 months as a way to help our school districts take the additional resources that they're going to get, either through state aid or through the ESER funds, to leverage students that have fallen behind, students that have been lost, you know, communicate. Because all of those strategies to do that is what we've been trying and piloting and using in redesign and a lot of districts outside of redesign. We're just going to take our resources and our focus to help them. Now is the, an opportunity to do the things that we've been saying because nothing's new on the plate. Everything's just highlighted on the plate. And now they all, all public, private have an opportunity to take another step. So again, the purpose of the navigating next guidance, and I'll refer back to these. The purpose of the guidance is to support our schools in providing concise, prioritized guidance to get between today and the end of this school year. And then begin planning on the next 12 to 24 months. In addition, how will they use their ESER funds to support their initiatives to move forward? There is this one page, the committee or task force that worked on these recommendations said, these are the things they've got to be thinking about today in preparing for the remainder of this school year. We've got to get a plan to get vaccinated. We'll be surveying again, council of superintendents this afternoon to try, we just monitor with them. We meet every Thursday with them, just trying to get feedback and how things are going. They've got to think about this graduating class. What are they going to need? So I'm not going to read through all these, but they, these are just some things for them to think quickly about prioritizing and getting teams around moving these things The written guidance takes all six of these to a deeper level. And again, mostly in question format. We will have it online because as you go through these, every page has links. So when we have this on our website, once the board approves it, as they're going through this, we've linked them to critical documents. As you'll see in the, the questions around vaccination, it links them to health and environment. So throughout this whole document, we wanted to make it simple. We wanted to make it concise. We wanted it to guide them in their thinking and planning, and then embedded throughout it, it'll take them a link to additional resources. And then as we presented yesterday, Bart Schwartz from Greenbush. Now Bart draws the short straw, I think, because all seven service centers drew straws, and Bart had the short one. So whenever I need to quickly meet with all seven service center directors, I just email Bart, and then he quickly communicates. So he's kind of like the Service Center Association liaison. He's my point person whenever I need to pull them in quickly. And they've done a fabulous job since March of last spring of leaning in to every one of our efforts. And then they created, we provided them some financial support using our ESER administrative funds to create this new teaching and leading website because we knew service centers, our staff, could not get out in person. So we had to quickly shift to create guidance, professional development. And then, and they have already, as we demonstrated yesterday, have already updated the website to include these six areas, and every one of them already have grab-and-go resources. They have video modules that are being created, and we will continue that between today and December 31st of 2020. We've extended our work with them, and every service center has agreed to take their staff and commit it to providing the professional development to this navigating next guidance and resources to help our, throughout the summer because our educators are going to need quick, quality, on-time, anytime resources. quick, quality, on time, anytime resources. Thinking about how can we look differently at summer school? How can we look differently at before school, after school? How can we, you know, move to competent? All of the stuff that we've had in the Kansans can vision, what Kansans said, we need to move towards. Everything in there is aligned to, um, what Kansans said we wanted. So that's kind of the, the first part of it. I'm going to let Craig, um, share with you again then how the ESER funds will support our districts and move in that direction over the next couple of years.
All right. I'll just try to move quickly through what you, what we discussed a little bit yesterday. Just as review, you'll recall 90% of the funds in both ESER one and ESER two flowed directly to the school districts through us to the school districts on the Title I formula. It's even spelled out how, how much each district gets by the time the money gets to us. They draw it down monthly as they need it. That the key issues, they, they receive a list of uses from the federal level. It's built into the statute. But the, the, the main idea is it has to be related to COVID-19. And the intent is to assist students who are struggling. You will find some other uses in there, but the, the primary intent is assist those students who are struggling. And there's the dollar amounts for the 90% that flowed through directly and the time limit. So with ESER one that they started receiving late last spring, their $76 million. They have until September of 2022 to spend that amount. And for ESER two, quite a bit more money, 300 and almost 333 million dollars flows through. And they have an extra year to spend that money. As soon as it starts becoming available. And the reason for the, showing you the range per FTE in the districts from 66 to 200, 2,354 has to do with what we would like to do with the 10% that the, the KSDE can direct. In the first round, we directed that for special education uses. Funding in special education, the increase in funding from both state and federal level has not kept up with the increase in costs. So districts are having to spend more and more of their general fund for that. So we directed that $8 million for special education. For round two, we have about $36 million. And we have three different uses identified for it. The first being what we talked about yesterday, a minimum amount per pupil for those districts. That $66 a student doesn't allow them to cover some of the basic needs you run into in the pandemic. The second use is for schools for the deaf and school for the blind. And that amount of money is what they told us they would need for the next two years to cover the, the issues that they have around the pandemic. And then the balance, which would be nearly $24 million, would be dedicated again to special education and we would split that up over the two years. So that we don't run into a maintenance of effort issue. You, you can't spend a lot of money in one year and then cut back the next year. Or the federal government will reduce your federal aid accordingly. And they don't reduce it in just one year. It's reduced forevermore. So we want to avoid that. And then finally, the gear funds. The emergency assistance for non-public schools, which is the ENS acronym, is a little different than typically federal funds are handled for non-public schools. Typically, the money goes to the public school and the public school provides the services. So if a student in a private school is in special education, frequently it's the public school that provides that service. You cannot give the money to the private school. You provide the service for them. In this particular act, the money for non-public schools was, was a separate pot, if you will, that flows through the governor's office with KSDE to administer it. $26.7 million and that's for both accredited and non-accredited, non-public schools. So we will administer that, probably utilize our service centers a little bit to help oversee that process and provide some of the training and those types of services to the private schools. So that's a real quick run through, hopefully real quick. And we would stand for questions, I believe.
Questions? Anne?
Thank you. I, I really don't have a question. I just think it's an amazing document. I mean, it's so concise. You can whip right through it and find what you need. And I love the links to the resources. So looking forward to getting this out to the field. Is this going to be covered, I'd take it this afternoon in the Council of Superintendents? So the superintendents will already have it today?
Today, and then we'll do some follow-up, Anne, tomorrow at our 12:30 Zoom. But yes, they're going to get it today and, uh, that'll be, Brad's going to go over that.
Yeah. Well, I think particularly that, as you know, the districts that don't have 10 people sitting around the administrative office. You know, am I asking the right questions is the right question to ask. So anyway, kudos to whoever was involved.
And, and I'd like for Brad to also tell you a component of the training that we plan to do in order to really bring them together. Brad, would you talk about USA and how we're going to go through that? So first of all, the, the reason, we know anytime you print something, it has a shelf life. So this document is intended to help them get to the end of May. The website, because we know that we will be providing supports for the next two years. That's why we wanted to use the website, the Kansas Teaching and Leading Website to provide all the resources and documents. Cause we can continually update that on a daily basis and we will over the next several months. So the shelf life of this is May. But a lot of the stuff in here will be also on the website and we will continue. That way we can just continue to support the school districts and update it daily. We are also in communication with using some more of our administration funds from ESER for us to administer all of this. We are working with United School Administrators, Kansas Association of School Boards and the Kansas Educational Leadership Institute, KELI, which is out of K-State that provides mentoring to bolster their teams and their groups to provide specific targeted leadership training for principals, school and district administrators on how do we lead through this type of change? So they are, they have submitted a proposal. They're going to build their team. They're going to do, um, regional where they bring principal superintendents in. They'll be doing bi-weekly, you know, zooming with it. So we're also going to partner with them. Because one of the, one thing we learned after navigating change, we can put everything out there. But that doesn't mean they're going to use it. So this time with navigating next over the next couple of years, USA, KASB and the KELI Institute is partnering with us to help give our leaders the supports and resources and guidance all around navigating next and how to use those funds to move forward. Cause we don't, our goal is not, again, the Kansans can vision is bold. The goal coming out of this pandemic isn't to get back to where we were before the pandemic. It's how do we use this to continue to move forward with our plan and our purpose as a state? And we think it's a opportune time to do that.
Are there other questions? Michelle?
Thank you, and thank you for the quick presentation. I know we just got this yesterday. We've been anxiously awaiting. I asked for it la- last Tuesday and they said that teams were still working on that. And I guess that's my concern is we've had less than 24 hours. Everything, sometimes they push bills through over the legislature. Sometimes they say we have to, they're trying to push one through right now, but I'm concerned with, um, because they're, they're on a time crunch. But it's like, yeah, there, there, there's too many bells and whistles in there and they're not, I don't think they're thinking it through correctly. But anyway, the, um, the, this, it doesn't give me as a parent assurance, an assurance or hope in my district that, that things are going to change anytime soon. I'm not seeing that, I'm not seeing that, um, with the communication. I see more things rolled out for social emotional that if we just get the kids back in the classroom, we'll fix a lot of those things. So they're keep offering these things in our district and keep emailing us on stuff that, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to do? Meet, meet on these things and meet, meet, if we can meet in person and do some of these things in person, why can't we be in school? I'm, so I'm, I'm very concerned with, um, only having 20, not even 24 hours to digest it. Not being able to have the public in my area, that's very frustrating and very concerned with the way our board, our local board is going as far as opening things back up. I just feel like I don't, I, it's not, it, it may help other, other areas that have, have been open and I appreciate that. And, and, and the way that they've brought in people that need services, that's been awesome. But there are a lot of kids, a lot of parents, a lot of kids that their needs are not being met. And I, it, it doesn't give assurances in the short time that I've had the time to review this. I just need more time. I need, I know that things have to be, there's schedules that have to be in calendars and things, deadlines we have to meet, but I want to get it right. And I want to make sure that, um, the public in my area is aware of it and what it's going to do to help. And, and what assurances and hope it's going to give for those kids that don't, we don't, we're not seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. We just keep seeing the goalposts being moved. And, and, and more testing and more barriers and things like that are, are, are not the, not the answer for us right now. So thank you for your time.
Following up on that, let me ask, uh, you go ahead, Randy, then I'll ask.
Michelle, one of the things you'll see in the priorities. Obviously we talked about vaccines first and then we talked about take care of the class of 21. And then it's about planning. Top priorities for using the, the ESER funds will be summer school, targeted summer school and, and extended school year, bringing kids back and, uh, and being in there. And that's what, that's, that's.
That would not be, that would not be a, that would not be a right answer for me right now. I don't want to hear summers. My kids don't want to hear summer school. And some people may want that and need, and need that. That's not what that, that's not going to be what parents, a lot of parents are going to be wanting right now is they, they want. Well, I'm just going to, I'm not going to speak for every parent, but, um, that isn't, when we talked about that with our kids, that was not what they, because they've been engaged. They've been doing their best. Um, they've been, they've been focused and we've been on top of them for that. And, um, and, uh, I, I'll, I'll stop there because I don't want to get into what, I don't want to speak for other parents. I'm just speaking as, as what our parents and what we're dealing with as far as. They wouldn't have to have the summer school if they would have opened up. They would have just done the right thing. And I, I think, I don't think that that's, I don't think that the summer school is going to be two, in two months, they're not going to, they're not going to, some of those kids aren't going to catch up enough. And I know it's going to go into whatever 2023, 2024, some of these funds. I just think that they, we just, we just missed the boat on doing the right thing at the right time for these, for these kids. Thank you.
When is the money available and when will it start being distributed or is that already happened?
If we're available to draw it down then. There's still money remaining in those accounts, so they're still drawing down ESER one funds. ESER two, uh, we anticipate having the oversight committee in place. Putting out the application form so the districts can tell us what's our plan. And having that hopefully completed and approved in March, so that by April 1, they can start drawing down funds.
Okay, uh, so the group that Janet and I are going to argue about who's the chair of is, uh, is, uh, only is, is going to be dealing with ESER two?
No, uh, we will have any ESER funds that schools intend to draw down and spend from that point forward, whether it's ESER one or ESER two, under the same guidance, same requirements.
And at what point will we know who's on that committee?
I'd have to defer that to.
Soon as I can confirm the 19 members, you'll probably know it, uh, maybe by the end of the week or early next week.
Okay. And when, what sort of time commitment are we, do we have any prediction about, you know? Are we, are we going to look at 280 requests every week or?
Hopefully not every week. No, sir. They will submit a plan. And initially, yes, you'll probably see 286, I hope anyway. They will need to update them as they go through the process. But I would not anticipate that happening very often, at least until after school starts. And they, that's when they're going to run into, oh, we didn't think about this, or we need to readjust that.
And is there staff support so that, uh, instead of us having to go through and say, is that one of the 15? Kind of, kind of look at the things and flag the things that may not?
The intention is, uh, that yes.
Janet will get tired after 203.
Yeah. I understand. I, I believe our intention is we will have staff, uh, preview the applications as they come in. So if there's a, a glaring no, that's not part of the 15, uh, we'll have that flagged before you see it.
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to the ESER one funds, I guess it was a misunderstanding on my part that those were already dispersed to districts to utilize. Or is it something that they have to present something to you directly and then they get reimbursed or? I guess I was not aware that ESER one funds were going to be part of this committee's oversight, just the ESER two money from the December bill.
So the ESER, ESER one funds were available last June. So up to this point, they've just been drawing them down. Here's the list of things you can spend it on. And they have to report that to the federal government, you know, annually. From, uh, this point forward, technically, the way the law works, ESER two is a supplemental appropriation of the same thing as ESER one. It's got a different name and they, they got more specific with their list of items. So there's three more items listed. But it, it's the same funding source, if you will. So it will all roll into one as far as how districts can spend it and draw it down. So we're going to make it all subject to the oversight process.
Okay. So is there differentiate, I mean, is the committee, I guess this is more for the committee, but there will be a differentiation in the law between what you could use ESER one, one funds for. And two, I mean, there's not much differentiation or is there any?
Depends on how you interpret it. ESER one, the last item listed, was sort of a, all other purposes that might relate to COVID. So anything that's detailed out in ESER two probably would have worked for ESER one as well. There is a requirement, um, and this, I know this isn't exactly what you're, you're asking, but for accountability to the federal government for the money, the districts do have to track the money separately. ESER one versus ESER two, even though they may spend them on the same things.
Yeah, I, I guess some of mine is, is immediate alarm because I didn't realize we were all talking about ESER one funds as being part of this. This as well. And that was not something that I had, it was, I was clear about in my mind. So this is more of a reaction to that than.
Sure. And I think part of the intention is we want one coherent plan, not scatter shot approaches.
Yep. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hi, Jean?
I, I did have a question. I realized that, that these funds are, are to be distributed based on their connection to deficits brought upon by the, the pandemic. But, but since we had more limited assessment of students to show that connection. So that the funds would be appropriate for that use.
When you say assessments, Craig and I look at each other thinking that you're talking about assessing learning loss? Or do you mean accountability or?
No, I mean, I mean, how, how do we show, you know, what, what the deficits are in our students and, and connect them to the pandemic?
Okay, so, um, school districts, and that's part of what we, one section in navigating next is we're going to provide them a lot of guidance, a lot of training on how to use their local formatives, interims, uh, to assess learning. Now, we don't collect when districts are using like. uh, to assess learning. Now, we don't collect when districts are using like FastBridge or Amesware. We, we don't get that data, but we will coach them on assessment literacy, on how to better measure academic and socio-emotional loss, and they will have that, and they can use the funds to do that. It's just we don't have access to local data like that. I don't know if that's answering your question, but there'll be a lot of guidance on the teaching and leading website on how they can go about assessing that. And if there's a cost to it, they can use these funds to support that.
Thank you. I, I guess it, it's apparent, you know, we can show that the class of 2020 didn't do similar, didn't have se-, uh, similar post-secondary outcomes that, that previous classes did. But it's hard to say, how far would we have gone had we not had a pandemic? And, and we're sort of, um, I guess facing that on past data and past information that other classes, what, what they would have reached at that, at-
And we know a lot of school districts right now have been given, kinda like, um, Beth shared with you yesterday, we have a lot of districts that use the, the state interim assessment for free, and what, what that was telling them. We even had more in, uh, the second round of interims, which is closed this week. But they do a lot of, of locally purchased assessment tools that, so they've been looking at a lot of where kids are, where they're not, what types of gaps they're seeing. It's just that as a state level, unless it's the state provided interim, we don't have access. But we know that's going on, because they've shared with us what they've seen, been seeing.
Janet, and then Jim.
Okay, I was just simply going to ask if you were ready for a motion.
You can go ahead and make it, but we'll still have discussion, yes.
Okay, I would just simply like to clarify very first, I wanna make sure I have, I think I understand this, but I want it stated publicly. Uh, would we approve navigating next? These are simply guidelines. And the districts, this is their choice as to whether to follow them or all completely piece of them or none of them. Is that correct? And on the other hand, when we approve the distribution of the, uh, uh, emergency funds, that is mandated by federal law, that they have to follow certain guidelines. So therefore, they can't just go do anything like Randy said, bill by curriculum, correct? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because I don't know that that's totally understood. Okay, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approved the navigating next framework as guidance for school districts transitioning out of the pandemic, and to approve the distribution plan for COVID-19 federal emergency relief.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to this motion? Betty seconds the motion. Now we'll continue discussion. Jim?
Thank you, Chairman Porter. I'm gonna follow up with, uh, recent comments and, and start with Michelle. Um, I too am concerned about the speed at which this has been brought to us and the opportunity that we've had to really give it an in-depth review. Be nice if we could, uh, but we can't. You know, we need to, uh, move on this and provide the guidance to districts. Uh, it's so important in a crisis that leadership provide the direction, but also listen. And as the field tells us what's working, what's not working, what needs to happen, we have demonstrated clearly through the navigation change process that we're adjusting regularly, monthly, to it. So we, I suspect we'll be hearing from you at the next meeting about navigating next and what we need to update and, and change or modify or enhance. But right now, our role in this leadership and, and, and the pandemic is to provide that stability of leadership and that confidence of leadership without, within our state that this document provides. This is a very complex, uh, challenge. Uh, not that other challenges aren't complex, but this is really complex. And the resources that are here and the guidance that's given will help, uh, local school boards, superintendents, and communities to make good decisions on how they're gonna use the S R funds, and that we have to build in the accountability. Yeah, when it's all over, we'll probably look back and say, darn, we should have done this, or darn, we should have done that. But we're giving it our best effort at the right time in the pandemic that these districts need, uh, to move forward and serve the students, especially those who are falling behind. So I'll vote yes on this, and, uh, I know you'll be back with modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. Does everybody understand the motion? In that case, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstain. The vote is nine, zero, one. Well, I was expecting to be here till 10 o'clock, till eight o'clock tonight, but I guess that's not the case. Do we have any other? Is this, is this, is this it? Do want to make a couple of announcements. Traditionally, on our first, when we reorganize, we, uh, choose seating. But because of the pandemic, uh, we're different than we have been in the past. At the first time that we are back, uh, as we were, and everybody's at the table, even the lawyer, uh, who, who's in a court situation right now, so that's the reason he's not here. Uh, we will give you the opportunity to, but we'll, we'll follow that traditional role, unless the policy committee comes up with something different between there and then. Did you have something, Dina?
Well, we've heard a lot about 15 items that need, that can be used as, uh, the qualification for the funds. But I'm not sure that I've got a list of all 15, so I wondered if perhaps that could be provided to us. So if I have someone question me about it, I, I have that, so I can pull it out.
Good point, Dana. We'll get the-
Thank you.
Friday notes.
It has to be in the Friday notes.
Another issue that has come up recently, you know, if we, uh, as we, uh, uh, move forward with the legislative session, you know, that, uh, that things change quickly. Uh, and this is, uh, directly related to dyslexia. There were, if you recall, there were a number of recommendations that were made to the State Board of Education, all of which we have either implemented or started implementing or in the process of implementing. The one thing that we have not, uh, done yet is have the coordinator, the district, the, the statewide coordinator, because we were waiting for funding. That's part of our request, uh, that has been heard. I'm gonna be very, very careful about what I say now. Uh, but now there is an effort to actually assign the coordinator's position outside the Department of Education, uh, which, uh, and I have, uh, communicated with the chair the reasons that I believe that that is inappropriate, and it would be almost impossible for us. I indicated, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the State Board of Education, because of the recommendations that were made to us, has actually taken ownership of that program, and we cannot very well, uh, uh, respond and oversight that program if it is not under our jurisdiction. I believe that is a critical mistake. Now, because of relationships, I know where the chair wants to put it, but I'm not going to say that publicly, uh, because, uh, uh, because that, I, I have a relationship with a potential recipient who did not request it. But it was assigned, or it is in the process of being considered assigned to them, and I want to, uh, I want to do that. But the fact is that that is an issue that, in my view, if it comes to fruition, will re-, uh, slow down our, our, com-, our, our in, make it very difficult for us to continue as we are, because we need that person here coordinating with all the eight, all of the other responsibilities that we have, plus being able to coordinate with the, uh, service centers and the school districts and that sort of thing. I've been saying this today, just for your information, that is very recent, uh, like from yesterday. Uh, and I got a call on my way this morning from the potential recipient saying, what am I supposed to do? That it was not requested by the potential recipient, uh, and, uh, and so we had a discussion about that. But I wanted you to be aware, because what's, what in my view should be a very simple process, uh, is not simple. The motion to approve, at the, at the dyslexia task force, I think I've told you this, the motion to approve the, uh, funding of the, of the dyslexia coordinator at the Department of Education was made by Ty Masterson, who is the current president of the Senate. So it had, you know, it, it has his support. I have not talked to him, uh, since I found it, well, because I found this out the last part, right before I walked in the door today, uh, but, uh, but, uh, so it has good support, uh, and I think it's absolutely critical. But I wanted, uh, saying all this, and I think I've, I'm rambling now. I told you this to make sure that you were aware of that, and we'll keep you informed as we go, go ahead. But even if something happens, in order for us to be successful, we're gonna have to have somebody here. And, uh, and we'll have to figure out some way to do that, because this, uh, because the, 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 uh, being able to make sure everybody is trained, both in pre-service and in current service, uh, and screened and identified and, and, uh, and those services are provided is absolutely critical. And it can't be done from someplace else. Uh, it has to be done here. So that is today's hiccup in what should be a simple process. That being said, we will meet again on March the 9th and the 10th, and Randy, but did I say so? So I was gonna let you go home, but Randy's gonna keep you-
Well, I don't want to keep you much longer, but- But as we talk about happenings as we speak, and to Michelle and Jim's comment about speed, S R three funds look like they're gonna be, hit us before March 1. Now, I say that because we've been trying to talk to Senator Moran's office. It has cleared the House and the Senate, and it's in conference committees. Uh, but this, that, that's gonna be another allocation of money, it appears. I'm gonna talk about appears, because, but that money will flow like S R one, meaning the private school money will be going to school districts to be used, not a separate account like they did in S R two. I will keep you up to date as we know anything, but it appears that that money will follow the same 15 guidelines and have to be spent by 2024, uh, on pandemic-related items. Uh, if that occurs, the thought process is to wrap that money along with, to the task force, just like S R one and two and the gear money. But watch your Friday notes, because between now and the time that you meet in March, it's likely we will have, in theory, we may not have the money yet, but have passed a bill that also impacts education, and, uh, and I just wanted you to be aware of that, that we talked to Senator Moran's office this morning about that.
And?
Yeah, I just had a question about the S R money. You know, there's, as you know, there's already rumblings about, well, if they're getting, and I think the number they threw out was too high, but we've gotten 450 million or so in S R money. Maybe they can cut the general fund budget for schools. I would assume our legislative priorities already cover that, so that if that comes up, we can testify against it. Am I correct in my thinking on that?
Is that right, Ben?
I would say yes.
I know there's one that, not to do anything-
Because I think we had one about not cutting funds, but-
Because you can't use S R money for general fund oper-, or for general school operations.
Well, I know, we know that, but they wouldn't do that. They'd just cut general fund and say, go figure it out. So I just want to make sure you guys, believe me, I've been there, done that. So, um, I just want to make sure you guys can testify against it, that that's already in our priorities, because if not, I want to approve it today so that they can protect our schools on that front.
It's covered because of the basis I just gave you, I think, I feel, in concurrence with the chair and my colleague.
Just, you've got some talking points, but I know this can be very confusing. It's all new territory. You know, as we, as we go into this, this is unprecedented in our lifetime of how this is happening. Private schools in the S R two get just around $27 million. And depending on how many apply, because we don't know about the non-accredited private, it, I mean, if you just look at the private accredited and then the, you know, the handful like the Wichita Collegians, and you just did a per pupil amount, it is equal to, it's slightly greater than the public school amount. I only point that out, say, it's gonna be an equal amount going to private school per pupil, as it will public schools in S R two. It has to be used a little bit differently. But I, you'll get questioned on that, and I just wanted you to, to be aware of that. And, uh, as the task force gets up and going, and it will be fully going when we meet in March, Jim, Janet, and I will update you on that process and how that's going. And it will also be, uh, open live stream to anyone that wants to watch.
Randy, I know I've seen the list of 15 things public schools can spend their stuff on. Would you also send out what private school guidelines are, so we'll know? Thank you.
Sorry. Well, I don't ever be quite so. I want to, uh, comment again, welcome our new members, and tell you that, uh, something as you plan the future, it's not always this easy. Sometimes it gets complicated. And on that note, uh, we are adjourned.